Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, April the 5th, 2018. The time is 7:00 PM. This is the regular city council meeting, City of Leander, Texas. You are all welcome. If you'll please rise for our invocation. Councilmember Navarrete, would you please lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to do the best things we can in your name, Lord, for the benefit of our city. Lord, as always, please pray over our first responders, those serving locally through the nation, and those abroad. Lord, it is election season. Lord, let us keep you at the very first of our thoughts to be able to serve our community the best we can. Lord, please watch over us in everything we do, in every decision we make. In thy Lord's Prayer, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Ms. Crabtree, please call the roll.
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Rhonda Brusie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jeff Siler.
Here.
Councilmember Troy Hill.
Here.
Mayor Christopher Fielder.
President, we do have a full quorum, a full council, and a quorum. We are eligible to do business. We're going to move to item number three, staff comments. I'm going to recognize Mr. Womack.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to announce and mention three cleanup events coming up here this spring. The first one is April 7th. It's a household hazardous waste cleanup event in Cedar Park. It is at the Gupton Stadium. It's on Gupton Avenue. It is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's open to everyone. Some of the things that you can bring include automotive fluids, pool and lawn chemicals, paint, solvents, varnish, cleaning products such as oven cleaners, drain openers, any other household products labeled with caution or poison, brush for recycling, and also electronics, computers, such as computers and printers. Again, this is open to everyone. One thing I would like to mention is that it is a big event, so participants are, you should expect, if you go, to wait one to two hours to do, to drop off the things that you have. Again, it's at Gupton Stadium from 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM, again, in Cedar Park. And this event is put on or performed by Williamson County and Cedar Park and Waste Management. The second one is here in Leander. In fact, the next two are in Leander. But our residential spring cleanup event is April 28th. And that's the flyer to the left, and you'll see a map there to the right. But some of the things that we accept, this is not a household hazardous waste event, so we accept residential quantities of other items such as brush, yard waste, automotive batteries, furniture, lumber, old mattresses, motor oil, paper documents for shredding, scrap metals, and vehicle tires without the rims. And then the not accepted are the items that I just mentioned that are accepted on the 7th in Cedar Park. And then the last event, before I go forward, you can see the map on the right. We just ask everyone to come in and go through the stations. It looks sort of chaotic when you get there, but it's controlled. I think the way it's set up, it helps reduce wait times. People come in and you don't know what's on top of the pile in the trailer, so they can go where they need to go and drop off whatever they have on top. So it looks somewhat disorganized, but when you go through there, it does move quick. So it cuts down on the wait times. I think it's 10 to 15 minutes. One thing I do want to mention, we ask residents, it's open to residents and water customers. We ask them to bring two forms of identification, a utility bill and a driver's license. We also ask that contractors not come in. And other things for people that participate, don't crop off items and leave them curbside to need to come in. And also bring them in your original containers. We did mail out notices in the mail that should go out, about 14,000, over 14,000, almost 15,000. It's grown to that point. We do expect over, last year it was almost 1,300 cars, so we expect more than that. It's grown every year. We've even cut back on the hour sum, and it's still more cars. Those last, those late afternoon hours, they tend to drag on, and they just weren't very productive. So we did shorten hours, but we still, more people, more quantities. The paper shredding's fairly new. We've done it for a couple of years. This is our, I think it's our 13th year of doing this. Our second, it'll be our second or third year of paper shredding, and we collect six tons of paper. So that doesn't seem, people come in and you get, six tons adds up pretty quick. We also collected 56 yards of the large 40 cubic yard dumpsters last year, and then motor oil and batteries and a lot of, just, we start out and everything fits in the dumpsters, but by the end of the day, it's a big pile. So it takes a lot of, it's a day's event, but it takes a week to clean up. And then, excuse me, the last event will be here again in Leander, at the Public Works Facility on Municipal Drive. It's a, it will be a household hazardous waste event, just like the one in Cedar Park. Waste management will come here along with their contractor to do the disposal for the household chemicals. I would like to thank in advance, the Parks Department's always been helpful with us. They'll have eight guys there to collect brush, and Al Clausen donates dumpsters, Hudgens collects and recycles the oil, and Data Armor will do the paper shredding. So it's a, it's a big event. I'd just ask that you mention it to people and pass it along. We'll advertise it in the mail, and then we'll have the message boards out as well. And then all three events, the first two are on the website now, and then the third one, when they publish a flyer, we'll go ahead and post it on our website. But I have talked to the district manager of the Waste Management, and he's confirmed Saturday, September 8th, and I believe that will start probably around 10:00 AM, just like the hours at the Cedar Park event.
Mr. Womack, is the Cedar Park, does it require an ID as well, or how are they doing that?
No, sir. It's open to everyone.
Okay. But the two of ours obviously are specific to us and water customers?
Yes, sir. Leander residents and water customers. And we usually ask them to tease them that the water bill needs to be paid, or the utility bill needs to be paid to get in.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Womack.
Thank you.
You bet. Want to recognize Mr. Tummens? Mr. Tummens?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Also, April 28th is Mason Days and the 40th anniversary of the celebration of our city and the birth of our cities, so to speak. So we hope to see every one of you out there, and it should be a great day of celebrating Mason Days. I'd like to also thank you for the proclamation that the mayor has signed, recognizing Autism Awareness Month. We've been doing this for several years. We've lit the building blue. When you walk out tonight, you'll be able to see the blue lights and in working with World Autism Awareness Day, which was earlier this week. So we thank you for this, and I know the Central Texas Autism Society will thank you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Tummens. We're going to move to item number four, citizens' comments. Would anyone like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing now, we're going to move to item number five, recognitions, proclamations, and visitors. We do have a proclamation that is on the agenda for Child Abuse Prevention Month. We're going to move that to the 19th agenda. We're still going to do it this month, but it's going to be on the 19th. The individual that was going to be receiving that couldn't be here this evening, so that's why that is. We're going to move to the, I'm going to call the chief up, and I think you've got a group of people here with you, and we've got two or three different things to share. Bring Falkor up.
Keep Falkor over there.
Councilmember Shepherd would like to hold Falkor while she's reading the proclamation.
No. Oh, keep him.
Where's his hat? No hat? Sunglasses? He's eyeballing every one of you right now.
I am, at the same time.
You know, tell us what we're recognizing, and then we'll read the proclamation.
Do you mind reading that first?
You bet. So the first one is National Animal Control Week. Who has that one? You have that one, Ms. Navarrete?
No, sorry.
I have that one.
You have that one?
I was just kind of, I was waiting.
You were just waiting to see?
Trying to find the.
Councilmember Brusie, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas April 8th through April 14th is designated as National Animal Control Appreciation Week and is a time set aside to recognize and thank all animal control personnel. And whereas during this week of appreciation, we recognize the hard-working men and women of Leander Animal Services, who serve the public like other public safety and law enforcement agencies, responding to the needs of the community, keeping animals and humans safe from harm. And whereas the City of Leander expresses its sincere thanks and recognizes our Leander Animal Services officers for their dedication and services they perform for our residents and the animals living in our community, and for their commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. And whereas the Leander City Council wishes to commend all animal control officers for their dedication to the health, safety, and protection of the citizens and animals of all communities. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Christopher Fielder, and the Leander City Council do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2018, as National Animal Control Appreciation Week, and encourage all citizens to join us in expressing our sincere appreciation for the services, the service and dedication of our animal services officers.
Now, I might add that this is the award-winning animal control services, because they've won some state awards, I know, and some stuff from TML, so chief.
That was what I had on my head.
Oh, good.
I'm sorry. No, I just want to thank you guys, one, for the proclamation, and an honor it is, you know, one, to be the chief and serve with such an amazing group of people that are standing behind me that work in our animal services. You know, I know at the beginning it said animal control, and one of the things we changed many, many years ago was taking the word "control" out of that and putting the "service", because that's what we, that's our philosophy, is providing a service to those in our community. We know that this city is going to grow, and with people comes pets, right? And we want to have some of the same people like we have standing behind me, that they're about what they do. It's a passion, and the service that they provide is amazing. So I'm very proud of each and one of them. I know it's a hard job. You don't hear a lot about animal services typically. It's a, you know, a law enforcement agency, but there's so much that they do that you don't see. And one of the programs that we have been doing, and we are doing even more of, which is why we brought Falkor, the bearded, tangerine-bearded dragon. And he's part of a reading program, a literacy program that we're doing with children with a Dr. Seuss book that talks about a lizard. We also have a snake, which I'm not too fond of myself, but trying.
Thanks for bringing the lizard.
Yeah, well, you brought the lizard. And we also have a frog that we use, and it's been a great, great tool to not, you know, not be what you may see in other cities where it's just, hey, there's the dog catcher. No, our animal service people do more than just that. They're educating. And that's our philosophy, is we want to educate. We know we have to do some enforcement sometimes in some situations, but our primary focus is educating those in our community and to be responsible with that owner. So just want to thank you guys for all that you do, and y'all are amazing, and I'm lucky to have them on our team.
Good. If you guys would stay, yep. If you guys will stay up here, maybe I'll scoot y'all right there. We're going to do two more, and then we'll get a big group picture with everybody. That would work. And again, Councilmember Shepherd will hold Falkor for you during the picture. Awesome.
I'm watching Falkor.
Our next proclamation is for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And that would be, Councilmember Shepherd.
Whereas April 8th through April 14th is designated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. The irony of that just kills me. And whereas emergencies can occur at any time, and ensuring the swift response of police officers and emergency personnel is pivotal to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the first and most critical contact our citizens have with these services is the Leander Police Department Communications Center, and the safety of the public as well as that of the responding emergency personnel is dependent upon the specialized skills in providing critical assistance, the accuracy and timeliness of information gathered and distributed. And whereas telecommunications officers provide a vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, ensuring their safety, providing them with critical information, and have contributed substantially to locating the parents and guardians of lost children who are unable to provide their information, the provision of emergency services, and good customer service. And whereas each telecommunications officer, the first first responder, has shown they are dedicated to saving lives, provided a calm presence during critical times, provided reliable access to emergency telecommunications services, and has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Christopher Fielder, call upon all citizens of our community to recognize the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Awesome. Thank you. And again, this is a group that you'll always hear but never see, again, because their primary function is that lifeline, not only to the officers that are on the street, but to those from the community that may call in an emergency or have a question. They're often the first person they will be speaking with, could be the last person they've ever spoke with. This is a very difficult job. It's not one of just, like you said in there, the focus that, on telephone that's ringing, the radio, the 911 calls, the screen where they have to see where every officer is and what they're doing, and if there's multiple stops, there's just a lot going on. It takes a special person to do that. You know, many years ago, as a rookie, I made the mistake of thinking I could do that job better than the one that was serving me at the time. And the chief at that time came in and asked me if I thought I could do the job better. Well, 25 years old, you bet I can do it better than that person that's sitting in there. And so he said, "Good, you're there for three weeks." Within three hours, I was calling and begging him to get me off that because of the phones, and there was so much involved. And I realized how appreciative, how appreciative I needed to be, and how important that communication operators are, that they're just never, never hear about them. You hear about all the heroic things that officers do in the community and all the things that happen, but there, behind every one of those good officers' actions, there's someone like this behind that radio, making sure it's all put together. Because, believe me, if I'm in a dangerous situation, and I'm starting to get amped up and I'm getting concerned of what I'm dealing with, these are the ones that talk you down and say, "Hey, calm down, let's get this going," and that's who you're listening to. So it's like having mom on the other side of the radio sometimes calming you down. So I can't even tell you how much I appreciate what they do, they do for our community and what they do for our department. And I'm proud to, again, serve with you guys, and thank you for all that y'all do, so I appreciate it.
All right, I'm going to have y'all come over here, too.
Did y'all bring a pet?
That's right. Did you bring a pet, show and tell?
No.
Okay. We've got one more Crime Victims Rights Week, April 8th through the 14th.
That one I do have. Whereas April 8th through April 14th is designated as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And whereas crime and the threat of violence have profound and devastating effects on individuals, families, and communities in America, crime victims may suffer a range of health issues, both mental and physical. And whereas more than 5 million violent crimes occur in the U.S. each year, violence hurts you and your community. And whereas there are over 10,000 community and system-based victim services programs across the nation that provide a wide range of services and support to victims of crime. And whereas the City of Leander is joining with victim services programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Williamson County to observe National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Christopher Fielder, call upon all citizens of our community to observe the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2018, as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Thank you. This is possible, these ladies that are here, possible is because of you guys, as council is coming together and started this initiative for our department. Victim advocacy is so important, because what I call this is service after the call. You know, an officer is dispatched to a house, and he's dealing with a violent crime or death or in a family or something, there's pieces that are broken, right, of this puzzle. And these ladies are the ones that come in after that officer gets dispatched to another call, because he's got to go, he's got to leave. He can't stay there. They come in and pick those pieces up and work with those families, not only through the, maybe the grieving process, or through the criminal justice process, and what's about to happen, what you're fixing to go through, whether it's helping them get to and from a courthouse, if they've got court hearings, or any of those services that are beyond that next step. You know, again, many years ago, even dealing with certain calls that I've gone to, you deal with a domestic violence, husband went to jail, lady's left there, you know, he's gone, the kids are crying, I had to leave, and I was like, I don't know, I can't help you, I got to go to the next thing. And that's a terrible feeling. And with a city of our size, to be able to provide that service to those in our community is amazing. You know, there's some, we call it community-based system, because our community-based system is every one of these individuals here, they're not paid, they're totally volunteered, they're from our area out here, so they're invested in here. They're not from a system-based type system where they're just coming in from 60, 70, 80 miles away, and it's just a job. They do a lot for us. So, you know, when we first got them on board, even the officer's like, what do we need them for? You know, what do they do? And then when Myrna was out for a little while, and they were out for a little while, our officers were like, where are they at? We need them. We need them to help where we're at. So they've come dependent on them so much to kind of help, because every officer wants to help somebody, but they can't when they've got to leave and go somewhere else, and they can't spend that time. And every time we've called one of these ladies, they're there. And they're there not only then, but they're there through the entire process, even after. So, and even some people themselves later on that they've helped will turn and give back and become victims out if it gets to help other people that have experienced that. So thank you, ladies, for all the things that you do and what you do for us and our community and our department.
God bless y'all.
She took some meat there.
I'm going to go down and take a picture with all of y'all. Counselors, with Jeff in the end, we'll have our recognized groups here in the middle. It's amazing here. Okay, council, we're going to move to our consent agenda. This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
There's been a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete with a second by Councilmember Shepherd. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. We'll move to item number 13. This is our public hearing, no action. Item number 13 is conduct the second public hearing on the voluntary annexation of 64.380 acres, more or less, of land out of the Anastasia Carr survey, abstract number 122, recorded in volume 2542, page 838, of the public records of Williamson County, Texas, setting an annexation schedule provided for open meetings and other related matters. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second public hearing on the voluntary annexation of the Simpson track that you just described. Y'all held the first public hearing last week, and we will begin the first reading of the annexation case. When will that be? On May the 3rd. And the second reading will be completed on May the 17th. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them after the public hearing.
Great. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing now, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor, any comments or questions? Hearing now, we're going to move to item number 14. These are our public hearing, and these are actually action items. Item number 14 is conduct a public hearing to consider special use case 18-SU-002 to allow for the addition of airstream trailers that can be used for retail, restaurants, and personal services, as well as permit alternative signage on two parcels of land, approximately .50 acres, more or less, in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District, Parshals R036040 and R036039, located 201 and 203 West Broad Street, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we just had a special use case at the last council meeting, so I won't go into too much detail, but as the council knows, there's basically two different types of uses allowed within the composite zoning ordinance, those that are allowed by right within the zoning district, and then what are called classified as special uses, which are allowed by a special use permit. The applicant's request is for the ability to place temporary structures on the site, which isn't a use that's allowed by right in the city zoning ordinance, and so the special use permit is the appropriate vehicle to allow for this use. Y'all will probably be familiar with the site. It's here at the end of Rushy Street on Broad Street at the corner of Rushy and Broad. And the site already has one temporary structure on it, an airstream trailer that houses the Smooth Salon. That was allowed as a warrant under the SMART code for up to a two-year period. The applicant has come back and requested the ability to add additional airstream trailers to the site and to extend the timeframe for the permit to 10 years to allow for the temporary uses to be there for that period of time during the lease term of the lease of the land. And the other request is for some alternative signage. There's images of the signage in your package, which would be placed on the top of the trailers, which would allow for more visibility of the uses on the site. The other request is to allow for temporary stage for, well, it's actually a permanent stage, but to be utilized for live music and outdoor entertainment until 10:00 PM, and to be able to utilize portable restrooms for special events on the site. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on this case at their meeting last week, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the request, with the one condition that the site be limited to no more than seven airstream trailers. And the applicant is here. I'm sure she would be happy to discuss her request with you and answer any questions as well.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? It's up to you. Now would be the time to do that, if you want to make a presentation.
I'm the owner of Smooth Hair and Wax. My husband and I have worked very, very hard to build the entire everything. So we've had so many people come into our salon saying, are you guys going to put food on the place? Are y'all going to do this? Are you going to do that? And so I'm basically kind of listening to what everybody says and trying to make it something awesome, so we have a good community place for family, and it's not just for women or men to come and get their hair cut, or to get waxed, or lashes, or facials. It's somewhere we can all kind of congregate and enjoy the company of our families and have some comedy, or some live music, or, you know, just have dinner together and have a little variety. So Leander, we want to be a destination, and I think this is a good way to make it something that people want to ride the train to from Austin and come here and hang out, and then go home. You know, that way, we can all be a part of the community and not go just to a restaurant or whatever. This is a beautiful property, and I don't know if any of you have been to the property, but it is somewhere you want to hang out, you want to stay. Like, I have clients that come, and they don't want to leave. They want to hang out, and that's okay. Hang out, have fun, you know? But it's a family environment, so we would love to just bring the city in and make it more of a community place. I would love to do, you know, little things like small gatherings of a farmer's market or something, you know, just community. So I think that the Chamber of Commerce and the festivals, everything goes right in front of my shop, and I think that it all can come to the back, too, you know? So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Hang close, we might have some questions for you.
But it's a family environment, so we would love to just bring the city in, and make it more of a community place. I would love to do, you know, little things, like small gatherings of a farmer's market, or something, you know, just community. So, I think that the Chamber of Commerce and the festivals, everything goes right in front of my shop, and I think that it all can come to the back, too, you know? So, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Hang close, we might have some questions for you, okay? Great. This is a public hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am? If you'll come on up? So, what I'll need for you to do is, at this time, if you'll state your name and address for the record, this clock will come on, and you'll have three minutes, and then when you're done, I'll need you to get one of these cards and fill it out for us, so we'll have a record of your speaking.
Sure. So, my name is Aurora, and I live at two-seventeen Center VC, here in Leander. I am a client of Angels, and have been for just a little bit of time, but I just wanna say, like, exactly what she just said, I come over, I get my haircut, and it's someplace that you just don't wanna leave. You just wanna, you just wanna, it's a restful place, I don't want to see you hang out there, but it's a restful place. And my kids are a little older, so I wouldn't, I don't have, like, little kids that we'd hang out, kind of run around, but I could see that, I could see that my neighbors would come out with their little kids, and just, you know, bring a picnic, and bring, you know, snacks, and just be there for a few hours. So, I just wanted to kind of support her, and say that that is something that my neighbors and I have talked about doing, so it's a really beautiful place, and it's nice to kind of just be there with family and friends.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
The public hearing is still open, would anyone else like to speak on this item? Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna move to discuss and consider the first reading of an ordinance for special use case eighteen dash SU dash zero-zero-two to allow for the addition of airstream trailers that can be used for retail, restaurants, and personal services, as well as permit alternative signage on two parcels of land, approximately point five-zero acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels R zero-three-six-zero-four-zero and R zero-three-six-zero-three-nine, located two-oh-one and two-oh-three West Broad Street, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis, I've got a few questions, which I think you knew I was gonna ask.
Yes, sir.
So, the way this is written is, to me, extremely restrictive, and I just wanna verify that this is the way it's written, or it's not. I wanna make sure I'm understanding. Because it specifies an exact brand and style of trailer, that's the only thing that could go there, is that correct?
The way the request was submitted, it was for the airstream-style trailers. Now, airstream is a brand name, I would think that we would be able to interpret it to be that style of trailer, because there are some other brand names that look the same.
Well, but that's, but that's not what it says. Even in the ordinance, it says specifically, and the reason for this, it says it in a special use addition of airstream trailers. So, the problem that I have is that if a Hat Creek Burger, or Kona Ice wanted to sit up there, they wouldn't be able to, under the way that this is written.
That's, well, unless they went into an airstream trailer.
That's correct.
Right.
But they couldn't pull the Kona Ice trailer up there and set up, and do that based the way on this is written.
That's right, that's right. And that, I think that is-
Is that the intent?
Ms. Maxwell's intent, is to have airstream-
So, you wanna restrict it to that? You can come on up, if you would please, thank you. So, you wanna restrict it to the level that you can only put an airstream trailer?
Absolutely. And the reason being is because we don't want it to look cluttered, we don't want it to look mixed and crazy, we wanna keep it very classy, very cute, and kitschy, so if we keep it all silver, so we have a Spartan that is very similar to an airstream, it's still silver, and it's a little bit bigger, and it'll accommodate another stylist or two, and it's, that's the only one that's not an actual brand of airstream, however, it is a silver airstream-like, it's the cousin of an airstream, essentially. But we're not bringing in a bunch of mix-match stuff.
Sure.
Now, if it's, say, a festival, and it's a one-day thing, then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but that's not what we foresee whatsoever. Like, we want it to be very organized and very cute.
Great.
So, that's our plan.
Thank you.
Well, should we, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Should we edit the language to make it airstream or similar?
Well, that's what I was gonna get, that's what I was gonna get, Mr. Yanis.
Are they gonna be approved by you?
Yes, absolutely.
So, you'll have control of that anyway?
Yeah.
So, if we expanded it to allow for some other options, such as during festivals, would you be okay with that?
That's totally fine, yes, absolutely. My husband and I are definitely in control of who comes in, and who leaves, and how faster, you know, 'cause everything's very temporary, as far as the lease goes, so our lease is permanent. I mean, we've got a seven-to-ten-year lease on the property, so it depends on how things roll, as to who we're gonna have in, but regardless, nobody's coming in unless they have an airstream, or likewise.
Or something that you approve of. I just, I think he's right, I think it would be wise, at this point, to give you some flexibility, so that you don't have to bring it back later.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And that way, it'll make the process faster for you.
Thank you for thinking about-
Well, I would hate to see, again, somebody that we want, I know there's a Garbo's Lobster Truck, that's incredible, that's in Georgetown, and if they wanted to come over, and it would be awesome, but under this, the way this is written, we wouldn't be able to allow them.
Okay.
And you might want that for a weekend event, along with your-
Yeah, for an event, for sure.
You know, until you're built out, or you've only got two trailers in there to start with, and you wanted to do something else, well, we wouldn't be able to allow it, and I, honestly, there's enough things that come up, that people say that the city restricts and won't let you have, and in this case, it would be restrictive based on your request, but I don't know that people would understand that, so.
No, and I agree, and thank you for bringing that to attention, 'cause we just are trying to keep it, you know, nice-looking, so that's kind of where our thought was, but for a festival or something, short-term, absolutely, I mean, we would allow whatever, we just wanna make sure it looks good. So, I'm not gonna have some random coming in, you know, that's trashy. So, I just don't want it to look trashy, I want it to look cute.
Correct. Mr. Yanis? So, we need some help on how to word that here in a second, but also I have a question on parking, and what kind of noise, I know there's a noise requirement at ten, for ten o'clock, that's in the ordinance. Could you just touch on those two items? Parking's the big one.
There, the city doesn't have a parking requirement in Old Town for businesses, so there is no minimum requirement from the city's standpoint, so the parking is primarily, there's not gonna be any on-site parking in this location, it'll all be on-street parking, and so it'll just be on the streets. And, you know, they'll spill over, kind of like the beer market has no designated parking area, they use the street parking, they use the parking across the way in our parking lot, and that sort of thing, so that'll be where the parking will occur. And then in terms of the noise, they'll be subject to the noise ordinance, and the time limitation on music.
Okay, council, are there any?
I just, I just applaud the applicant for pursuing this, and recognizing the opportunity to do something unique in downtown, and I look forward to seeing how this develops.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything but positive about this, and the idea, so thank you, and it's, it sounds like it's gonna be a cute, little funky place to go gather.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Yanis, what are the hours allowed? I saw the stage was ten o'clock, but under the special permit use, I mean, is it? It's to ten PM. It's also to ten PM? Okay. Correct.
Ms. Maxwell, have you met with any of the neighbors around? Your neighbors, make sure they're cool?
Yeah, I've actually, uh, we've spoken-
Come on, if you, yeah, I'm sorry, come back up.
So, we have spoken with almost all of the neighbors, actually, and there's several that are businesses, so they're closed regardless, but the gentleman that lives directly across the street, kind of in the backside-
Right.
His, I spoke with his family at the P&amp;Z meeting, and the only concern they had was parking, and everything that we discussed, they were totally cool with. And then the two families that live across the street, they also, their only concern was parking, other than that, they really, they're really nice people, and they love what we're doing. We've cleaned that place up so much, it was not very pretty whenever we first moved in, and so I think everybody's really excited to see what's happening, and what's coming, and, I mean, come in, like, come see it, I dare you, I love it, like, come on, because people see it from the road, and they're thinking, what is that? Is it a smoothie place? Is it a cupcake place? What is it? And then they come in, and they're like, oh my gosh, this is adorable. So, it's really cool, it's a neat place, and it's gonna get better, so I'm so excited. So, yes, I have.
Cool, thank you. Are there any additional questions? Yep, Mr. Abbs?
I guess, I'll touch on the music part, I guess. Do, I don't know if I wanna put Chief Mitten on the spot, but I know that the beer market has outdoor music at times, so I'm just wondering if there's any complaints about that, if they're ever, I don't think we've ever had any. I'm just-
Okay. Is it permanent, or is it not?
And when do they have, what is their cutoff for, do we know? For the beer market? Is it ten? Is it ten PM? Okay, so I'm just trying, and then, I guess the only other question was, we don't have anything specifically in here about when, or would it be any day of the week? Could they, or?
It'd be permanent, the same way the airstream is now, the same way the-
No, I'm just talking about the music, they can have music seven days, up till ten, is that the same, is it basically the same thing we have for the beer market, I guess is what I'm asking? 'Cause that's the only, I mean, they're close enough by, so I'm assuming that they would both get treated the same. Correct? Okay.
Yes, it'll be the same as the beer market would be. Every, any of the businesses that have music and outdoor venues are subject to the noise ordinance as well. We have never had any problems with any of those establishments that have had outdoor music, or anything like that. I know it's something they struggle with in Austin, on Sixth Street, and things like that.
Right, and even at the Reunion Grill, whatever it is now, they've had issues with that one in Cedar Park, that's why I'm asking.
So, you know, with our ordinance, we have, our whole ordinance has to do with decibel readings, I won't bore you with the science behind all of that, but there is measuring distance, it has to reach a decibel level of eighty-five, which is very difficult to do, unless you're right on top of, you know, a loud, just gunshot sound, right away, it has to be continuous.
Right.
So, there's, it's, it's, it would take a lot for that to happen, but it could.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. I just, one last comment on that noise, not for you, but for the applicant, because you guys both have the potential to do live music at the same time, if you haven't already, have you met?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. So, I think it would be really cool if you guys could coordinate, and maybe balance each other out, or, you know, I see you sharing the same patrons.
Yeah, we're-
Getting a workout.
We're actually really supportive of each other, and we are gonna be working together with Gents to kind of coordinate, so that we're not gonna have, like, dueling banjos, you know?
Yes.
However, that would be kind of cool, but we're not gonna do that.
I was thinking that, sure.
But we are gonna, you know, have a little bit of fun with each other, and we're not serving alcohol at our property, like, we're not doing that, and so if someone wants to do that, like, they're right over there, you know? And I'm happy to point that out, and he's also happy to say, hey, there's food over here, or go get your haircut, or whatever, so we are gonna plan it, and we might borrow each other's musicians, and, you know, trade back and forth, so we have a really good camaraderie as far as businesses. We're small businesses, we have to stick together, so.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Yanis? I'll make a motion, if you can help me with the wording on how we get, I-
Expanded.
I think number one is just use of food trucks and trailers.
Yeah, and I'm struggling, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give a hundred percent leeway to just let anything go in there, like a pop-up tent, and whatever, that some guy's grilling hamburgers under it, which I know that's not your intent, or what you're trying to do, but I don't wanna make it that lenient, so some type of criteria that has to, I mean, obviously it'd have to follow the health permit regulations, but I guess wield, or permanent, or whatever your, what's your thought?
Why don't y'all just make the motion to expand the flexibility on that, and then between now and when we bring the ordinance back for a second reading, we will give you the correct language.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move for approval, with the expanded language on the airstream trailer to be a little more lenient in capacity. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And also the P&amp;Z's recommendation for seven?
Yes, and I will agree on P&amp;Z's recommendation. Are you okay with that? Ms. Navarrete making the second. Is there further discussion, council? All in favor? Motion does carry. We will have a second reading on that item, we'll get the verbiage worked out by then. Thank you. Item number fifteen is conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case eighteen dash Z dash zero-zero-three to amend the current zoning of interim SFS two-B, single-family suburban district to LC two-A, local commercial district, on one parcel of land, approximately one-point-nine-three-six acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Partial R three-seven-four-seven-one-seven, and generally located approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet east of the northeast corner of the intersection of CR one-seventy-seven and Ronald W. Reagan Boulevard, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing and first reading of a rezoning request for a parcel of land that is on County Road one-seventy-seven. This property is just east of Ronald Reagan, along that corridor, it is in an area on our land use plan that calls for this type of use, and the applicant has requested the LC district, that is an appropriate district at intersections along our mixed-use corridors, and this is within proximity of that. The property's also right on the edge of a neighborhood center, which also allows for this type of land use. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this case at their meeting last week, and they unanimously recommended approval of the applicant's request, and the applicant is here tonight, and said he'd be happy to answer any questions if the council has.
Does the applicant wanna make a presentation, or just answer the questions?
Answer questions.
Just answer questions, we have something, that'd be fine, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna move to discuss and consider the first reading of an ordinance, amending the current zoning for interim SFS two-B, single-family suburban district to LC two-A, local commercial district, on one parcel of land, approximately one-point-nine-three-six acres, more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Partial R three-seven-four-seven-one-seven, approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet east of the northeast corner of the intersection of CR one-seventy-seven and Ronald W. Reagan Boulevard, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Council?
Motion approved, second.
There's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Abbs, with a second by Pro Tim Siler. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry, thank you. Item number, we're gonna move to our regular agenda. Item number sixteen, discuss screening requirements for trash and recycling containers. Mr. Yanis, if you'll go ahead and give us an overview, and I do have a speaker that's signed up on this item.
At the March twenty-second P&amp;Z meeting, the commission had a discussion about the screening requirements for trash and recycling dumpsters. Our composite zoning ordinance does not differentiate between a dumpster for trash and a dumpster for recycling, and right now, it requires that all such dumpsters are screened by a wall constructed of masonry, and the commission made a recommendation to council to evaluate the dumpster screening provisions of the composite zoning ordinance, and direct staff to provide an amendment to these provisions, in order to relax the screening requirements for paper recycling dumpsters, and they were specific to paper recycling, because the conversation was about what, why screening is necessary, excuse me, especially for trash, when you have a mix of wet items, as well as dry items, you can get kind of a mess around them, and that's really one of the main reasons, it's the smell and the visuals of that, but with paper recycling dumpsters only, paper-only recycling dumpsters, you don't have as much of a concern about those liquids, and that sort of thing, so the commission's recommendation was specifically related to paper-only recycling dumpsters. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yep, I do have a speaker, it's Don Pratt. Mr. Pratt, if you'd please state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Don Pratt, Florentine Mesa Grande Drive, Leander. Thank you for letting me speak for a minute. I did contact Mr. Heinz about the paper recycling, 'cause three years ago, my son wanted to start a paper recycling program at our school, at Founders, and we were told that we couldn't do it unless we had an enclosure, and there's multiple problems with that, one, being a new school, we don't really have the funds to build such an enclosure at this point, but also because the drop-off, like, is all the public schools have, it's a place where parents can bring their recycling. It is also a fundraising program, which benefits the school, and as a charter school, we go through a lot of paper, because we don't have the funds for a lot of textbooks, so there's a lot of copying going on, we go through tons and tons of paper. So, to be able to recycle that, and to raise funds through the paper retriever company, would be phenomenal for us, and so I would just like to request that that be approved to allow us to have that.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Okay, council, this is an action item.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd, with a second by Pro Tim Siler. Is there further discussion?
Is, yeah.
Yep.
I'm sorry, just to see if there's a discussion.
Um, yeah, but I think they took action.
No, no, they asked us to discuss. They asked us to discuss, yeah, they voted to request the discussion.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're gonna need an approval to bring this back-
As an amendment.
As an amendment.
Right.
So, we'll take the motion and the second as a-
You want some feedback, though, right?
We would have to go through the whole process of amending the composite zoning ordinance in order to change this, so I think what we're looking for is just direction from council for us to start that process.
And can we make it, can we maybe modify the motion?
And can we make it, can we maybe modify the motion just to make sure that it is only for these, you know, like charter schools? Just, you know, K through twelve, I think was a good suggestion.
Why? Yeah.
Because I think if it's a business, they should be able to afford to put the enclosure.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah, we were, I, I know I had discussed that, that to make it just for the schools.
Yeah.
Just education.
I, I think they should get the same, I mean, it's LISD has the, the option. So I, I think we should give them the option as well. Because does Leander have to put enclosures for theirs? See, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Not for their abbey to be there.
Right.
But then if you think about nonprofits across, I mean.
Yeah, and non, nonprofits, maybe you can add nonprofits in too.
Well, you're getting kind of big there.
Well.
I don't know about.
What about, what about?
Well, I was thinking of private schools.
That's why I don't think so.
Just the schools.
Because that is for.
Any, any, yeah.
For profit.
Yeah.
But I would be for, you know, the.
But you gotta, you started thinking about, what, there's a charter school for profit or?
No.
No? Okay, just make it, but then a not, any other nonprofits the same, would be in the same category?
You gotta think the look you're going for.
I know, I, I understand. I just want to make sure we're clearly think about.
Well, what do you have in mind for nonprofit?
No, I don't, I don't have any, I just.
Because I don't, I don't.
I just want to make sure we're clearly thinking about all the options and all the different things. Because if it comes back, well, you didn't think about this when you did it, right?
I was specifically.
Business would ever have. Right. A recycling, paper recycling dumpster. They usually do that internally. Some, uh, at, at least my company has all, everything is internally, it gets shredded.
Just being a educational base type, I'd like it to be considered the same.
Right.
So Ms. Navarrety, what would your motion be?
I'd just like to, to approve it as the, I guess to get the same.
For the charter.
For charter school.
It's like a K through twelve.
Okay. And that's what you would recommend bringing back as well as the second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to bring it back with just the charter and, and Ms. Shepherd.
I made the motion.
Oh, I thought, I thought.
Just for the record.
Yep.
I, I was requesting him into the motion.
So my, my request would be, I, I don't know that, I don't.
I've only got four of these left and I'm gonna mess them up the best I can.
I would like to see staff maybe look into a broader application and give us some options before we bring it back because I'm, I'm a little hesitant to be that restrictive on it without looking at the bigger picture in a, in a five-minute conversation. I think it deserves a little more attention than that.
Okay, so your motion would be to bring it back and, uh.
With recommendations.
With recommendations. Okay?
I, I would also, I would like it to be including private schools too.
Okay.
Any schools.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, well.
Ms. Crabtree?
Just want to make sure I understand because this is supposed to go back to P and Z to start the process. So you're wanting us to come back before it goes back to P and Z?
No, that is, yeah. No, that's their job, right? We let them pass it out.
Well, but they mean that.
I think we, we have the screening for a reason. We, you know, we need to keep the city looking, you know, nice. But however, I think, you know, a private school, a charter school, something, you know, K through twelve, I think should be afforded the same, I guess, requirements not to have to screen it.
Like LISD.
LISD does.
Right. That's why it makes sense.
I don't think we need to open that whole can of worms as, as far as opening it to every nonprofit.
I agree.
You know, that's huge.
I agree.
Thank you.
So Ms., so Ms. Shepherd?
Give you something to think about.
What's your, you want to send it, send it back to P and Z for work with, on the schools and, and other recommendations?
Yes.
What, what do you have in mind?
I, I, I don't. That's what I'm saying. I think instead of us trying to decide that like here, let's send it back, let them have some discussion and do some digging into it and then bring it back with a recommendation that.
From P and Z?
Yes.
You okay with that second?
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion and second. Are you okay? Are you clear, Ms. Crabtree, on the motion and second?
And it's going back to P and Z to review the schools and other recommendations, other options.
To be brought back to us. That's correct.
So let me just clarify the process.
We only have one applicant.
Right, so the, the, the process would be, from here, the staff would, um, start the amendment process. We would notify, uh, in the newspaper and, uh, you know, advertise for a public hearing. And we would say we're going to amend section, whatever it is regarding, um, screening for dumpsters. And then the staff will take a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission for what the amendment actually is, what the language says. And then the commission during their, uh, deliberation on that amendment, they can modify that in any way they so choose. And then they'll make a recommendation to the council for what they think the right amendment is. Then you'll get to see that. And, but we'll be in the process of actually, the formal process of amending the composite zoning ordinance.
It works.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I'd just like to remind council that we just went through, uh, not, not too terribly long ago, several months ago, about, um, not allowing those temporary drop-off stations and how they did have to be screened. So I just want to make sure we're not flip-flopping here.
Good, good point.
Okay.
We do have a motion and second. Take it back, go through the process, further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Great, we'll move to item number seventeen. Receive, receive recommendations from the active adult advisory committee regarding program spaces for the senior activity center as presented by PGAL. Mr. Dummons?
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's exciting to be up here talking about senior activity centers. Um, remember back in the summer, we, uh, last summer, we went, uh, came before you and went through the process and we selected PGAL. Jeff Bula is with us with that, with that firm and, um, they started back in the fall, late fall, actually. And then we also went into, uh, selecting a senior activity advisory group. And we also came to you before the end of the year on approving us to move forward with a community development block grant, which we submitted earlier this week. So all that's combined together with a really great process. These, these, this group, this firm has been excellent to work with. I can't say enough about the professionalism, their experience, their knowledge. Uh, they've done many of these type of, uh, senior activity centers around our state. So I've asked Jeff to come in to give you an update of where we're at, answer any questions that you might have at this time. So I'm gonna let Jeff come up and take the podium.
Wow, thank you very much, Mark. Good evening, uh, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Let me see if I can find our, little switch here. Um, we have enjoyed the last, uh, few months working with, uh, Mark and his, uh, team at Park and Rec as well as the senior, uh, activity, um, about, uh, senior, active senior adult, um, advisory committee, I guess. It's getting all near advisory committee. They've been a delight to work with. They've been very enthusiastic and really engaged in the, in the project. We've done a number of things and, and I won't go into a lot of detail. We, um, just kind of go through some things very quickly with you. Um, we have, to kind of bring the senior advisory group up to speed, we have taken them on tours of local senior facilities. And so you can see here in the photos, um, we have toured, uh, uh, once in Cedar Park. We've been over to the Baca Center in Round Rock and, uh, Austin Senior Center. Then we gave them a slide presentation of senior centers in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, uh, where we've done a number of them there. So we gave them come a slide presentation instead of taking them, uh, to DFW area. So we've shown them senior centers at, uh, City of Allen, um, the City of Capel, as well as, uh, expansion for the City of Carrollton. And then the one that's more conceptual looking there is one they're working on in the City of College Station. So we've shown them the planning and the thoughts that go into that, just to kind of help them understand a little bit of state-of-the-art, uh, facilities. So then we did what we call, uh, tape dot exercises. We put large, uh, posters up on the board in front of the committee and we asked them to tell us after all their touring and how, and what they know of the senior community here in Leander, uh, in the surrounding area specifically, what are they, what do they determine to be the most important activities that we need to accommodate in a new facility? So you can see we recorded their thoughts, uh, put them, um, on, on the charts. And then we gave them each, I think it was five, uh, blue tape dots, you know, one inch round or so, and gave them the opportunity to vote for their priority. So they only had five votes, um, and so they, they categorized them. And so if you, we're having, I'm not sure what's going on because we're, I don't know if graphically we're missing some of the items here. I'm not sure if it's translated. Is this the PowerPoint or is the show or is this a PDF? Okay, do you, do you have, Mark, was he also given the PowerPoint? Do you have both of those? Okay. There's something going on.
It'd be better.
It's not showing up. This is a, a chart basically that indicates kind of the, the priorities as they saw it. And I thought it might be important, I apologize. Sure. But as I said, they've been very, very good to work with. They understand the scope of what we're trying to achieve. Um, they've been very engaged in the process. They've been very engaged in understanding that there is a fixed amount of money, um, and that we have to set priorities. Uh, and so it's, it's been a phenomenal process in that regard. Can you put it on the slideshow? Appreciate that. Thank you very much. That was very quick. Okay, so you can see there, we, we toured Cedar Park Rec Center, Treasure of the Hills, the Baca and the Austin Senior Center. And then I mentioned that we gave them kind of a visual tour of these views, uh, via slides. And then this is what I, where I noticed that was really important for you to see. You can see the, kind of the ranking, the number of votes that each of the activities got. So you can clearly and quickly see, yeah, either just in the list or graphically in the chart, same information, just two different ways of viewing it, that they really prioritize the arts and crafts, the exercise, a, a special, kind of special events, social events, computer technology classes, and then a number of things, uh, such as having some type of a coffee bar. Uh, food, the food service, uh, is, is certainly important. Um, perhaps a small lending library, strength training, dining, bingo, those sort of things. So, and then we talked to them about what are their exterior activities. You can see a number of things that are highlighted there. Very interested in walking trails, the possibility of, of gardening, outdoor seating, um, a number of types of games from horseshoes, washers, uh, cornhole, shuffleboard, uh, just quite a number of things there. Then we asked them, just on the, on the right side, give us some adjectives of, of what's, you know, in, in the sense of ambiance, what's important to you. Um, very much interested in having a very inviting and friendly facility, uh, you know, welcoming, um, comfortable, soft, uh, with a lot of textures. Uh, they're, they were very smart in asking for something that's very flexible, that's multi-use and multipurpose, um, and safe, warm, um, just, just on and on. And, uh, won't, won't continue down that list, but, but you can see kind of their priorities. So then the next part of what we did in terms of programming is, um, we brought in our food service consultant. Uh, it was just called Food Service Design Professionals. They've done, uh, a number of senior facilities with us and, as well as other types of facilities all across the state. And we, uh, went to toured, uh, the Meals on Wheels facility here, as well as they toured ones over in Georgetown, um, and I believe Round Rock, and, uh, really got a feel for exactly what's needed in a new facility. And they created a program, uh, there that you can see on the left. There, it results in a need of, for one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet to serve, uh, the meals. So they're projecting at this point that they'll serve, um, upwards of two hundred and fifty meals a day out of a, a new facility. They serve a little more than half of that right now. And that's just Meals on Wheels. Then they will also serve, um, approximately fifty-five, um, meals for the Head Start Early Childhood. And then we're projecting, uh, about seventy-five meals for seniors in terms of just lunches. And so, you know, you total all that up and it takes a pretty big operation to do that. We've also met, um, uh, on multiple occasions with the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center. We toured their brand-new facility and, uh, got a real feel for what they need. And so the sum, summary of all of that kind of input, the output, is this proposed list of spaces. And so, um, the, on the very right, uh, you can see it totals basically twelve thousand square feet. It's eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven square feet. Um, the, the spaces, if I start on the left and just give you a, a, a very quick overview, we're looking at, uh, creating a kind of a lobby or a reception area, but, but it's more than that. It would be kind of the heart of the facility, uh, so it would be kind of a more like a commons. And what they liked in some of the designs that we showed them is they really liked the idea of not having long hallways that go to connect spaces, but having a common area that is functional in activity, but then the various other enclosed spaces revolve around it. It's an efficient way. It's also nice because it allows people that are in that common area perhaps to see through, through glass enclosed, glass-walled, uh, rooms and see who's there, see if their friends, maybe their friends are in playing bridge. Somebody's in a fitness room. It just makes a much more inclusive facility. Um, there would be, of course, an administrative suite, uh, their programming based on kind of what they were asking for. It would require a game room, kind of a dedicated game room space with a shuffleboard table and card tables, um, maybe a large TV on the wall, some lounge seating for different events. And then an activities room of about a thousand square feet that would be subdivisible and would, with a partition and could be used for a number of, uh, different activities, as you can see the list there. Um, and then the large space in the facility would be just a very large multipurpose hall. We were programming that at eighteen hundred square feet. Uh, depending on how it's set up, it could, it could hold, um, upwards of a hundred people. And it would be, in, in essence, it would be the dining hall for the facility. So it would be adjacent to the kitchen. It would, uh, be able to hold dances, lectures, any types of special events, movies. It would have kind of a very sophisticated AV component, projection screen, sound system. And it, it could indeed be divisible with a, uh, operable wall as well. And then a dedicated fitness center primarily for cardio and weight training machines, uh, projecting that at six hundred square feet. And then the Children's Advocacy Center, their needs, basically what they're looking for is to have two counseling offices and then the accessory spaces that serve that, those two counselors. And that's proposed, uh, by, by the numbers we've worked with them, at seven hundred square feet. And then, uh, the next line item is the commercial kitchen, so that's the one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. The rest of the spaces are more just maintenance, storage, janitorial spaces to support the facility. And so, um, in summary to that, and this is our last slide, um, we believe that in today's kind of, um, economic environment with, um, the amount of construction going on and, and all that, we're looking at three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot for this facility to give you a very quality facility, um, something that is durable and long-lasting. And so if you do the math, at twelve thousand square feet times three hundred and fifty, you can see it's four thousand, uh, two hundred, um, excuse me, I wish it's four thousand, four million, two hundred thousand dollars, so four point two million. Um, so at, at this point, I'd like to, you know, answer any questions, uh, see what we can do to, to, uh, to bring you up to further speed if there's any more details you need.
You bet, council, there's no decision needs to be made on anything, but you're, uh, more than welcome to answer. Ask any questions.
I, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, you mentioned cardio and weight training equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm thinking for safety and space limitations as well as maybe even, um, cost basis. Have you considered resistance equipment and for strength training?
Yeah, some of those would be resistance, uh, machines for sure. I mean, I think, um, you would for sure have, um, um, elliptical machines and treadmills, um, and maybe a, a Stairmaster and, but the resist, the machines would be resistance-based as opposed to free weights for sure.
Okay, good. And then the other question I have is about security, especially if you're gonna have the Children's Advocacy Center using part of this facility. How is that being considered?
Great question. So there are certainly privacy issues there. Um, the Children's Advocacy Center would have to have its own separate entry. And what we're talking about is, is basically having a back door, um, fr- from that designated kind of office suite that would connect into the, um, community center, senior community center area, um, directly via, uh, card access control or a keypad, so that the advocacy staff could come over and use the kitchen or things like that. So to give the synergy of having them in the facility and not having them have a separate break room, um, that's what they thought would work. But you would not be able to go into their suite without the proper card access clearance from, from privacy. Um, we definitely, I think that's part of the reason that we're, you know, that, that the cost has to be per square for what it is is we're looking at putting closed-circuit TV cameras in, in the facility, uh, not just for the. is we're looking at putting closed-circuit TV cameras in the facility, not just for the Children's Advocacy Center reasons, but obviously just for the safety in this day and age of seniors. Just good risk management for the city to have it and good protection for our seniors. That address what you're...
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Council?
I have a question about the funding, because I know that the bond approved construction for the senior center, but we're also adding on the advocacy center here. And my question is, how's that going to be funded?
Well, that's one reason we're applying for the grant. And otherwise, it would have to be general fund money.
It would have to be general fund. And so is the Child Advocacy Center, that portion of it, is it also at 350 a square foot? Since they don't have the kitchen and everything included in that?
The 350 is just kind of a blended average of what the whole facility runs, based on our experience and just looking at the market. So we, it's very difficult to break it down and say, okay, offices are at 275 and the kitchen's at 400 and all that. We just know that the 350 is a responsible number for us to proceed on at this point, especially given that we're talking about, you know, probably $20, $19 for a bid, right?
How does this compare? How does this compare to the cost of some of the other facilities you looked at? Do you have that information?
I don't have it handy, no ma'am, right now, but it definitely compares, although we're talking about inflation because they're all open and have been open for the past couple, three years, the ones we showed. The ones that we toured around this area, none of them are recent, recent enough to give you an adequate comparison. They're all fairly dated. The Baca Center, I guess, is the newest, but it's been there for a little bit.
How does the square footage size compare to some of those other?
Certainly comparable to some. It's, you know, it's certainly not in the ballpark of the Baca Center by any means. It's larger than the Austin facility. The City of Capel is comparable. Their facility is just, I think, just over 14,000 square feet. The City of Allen is 21,000. It's hard to compare College Station because they actually have multiple places throughout the city that they serve seniors. So that's a little bit different approach than the City of Carrollton facility is significantly larger. So what, we believe that when we initially looked at the budget, we felt like we probably could only build about 10,000 square feet for the 3.7 million that was available for the cost of construction. And that does not serve what the Senior Advisory Committee identified as the activities that needed to be housed. And basically, I think as soon as it opened, you'd already be saying, what do we need to add on to it? And so Mark and I, we've looked at this in depth, and I think we're of the opinion on the same page that this facility at the 12,000 square feet would certainly serve adequately for the next decade. I think it's likely someday you might be wanting to expand and have a larger facility, but, you know, at this point, I think it's prudent, given where we are with the budget, and I think you'll have a very nice facility. And it's a brand-new site, too, so we've got to develop the site and get the parking and everything in.
That was my question. Like, when you build these, do you find that, you know, is it twice the amount of people that would use the previous type of facility end up using it?
Probably. I'm going to guess that this will be, it's hard to guess, but it wouldn't surprise me if you had four to five times within just months of this opening. The existing facility is very tight. It's, if you've been in there, it's interwoven with Meals on Wheels. The Meals on Wheels program, which is fantastic and necessary, you know, dominates the facility spatially and obviously for the first few hours of the morning as they're prepping and preparing the lunches to go out. And so they're very restricted on any kinds of activities there. I think that it's really impossible to say, but it'll be manyfold times the current number of seniors using it.
Do you have parking calculated in here? Parking is a big problem at the existing center as well.
Yeah, it's actually built into the cost per square foot. Yeah, it's just kind of way, sometimes it's just easier to do that because we can take a budget, a construction cost, and know the square footage and know that's what we developed. So yeah, that's included in the number. We believe that that at the 4.2 would be, you know, a turnkey cost of work for construction.
Mr. Cummins, in the CIP, it lists the senior center as a square footage of 18.5, and this is at 12. Can you kind of address why the difference?
If you'll repeat the question.
Yeah, in the CIP documentation, it lists the senior center as 18,500 square feet proposed, and this is at 12,000. Can you kind of address?
Well, I certainly can't address from what the previous director was looking at or, you know, the administration, what they were thinking then. I have come across some documents where there were talking anywhere from 16,000 to 18,000 square feet. But I also came across documents from the previous director who was applying in March of 2016 for the same grant. He turned that information in. The actual portion of the senior center was 4,000 square feet. There was another 7,300 square feet that was sort of joint use, and then 7,000 square feet for Head Start. So that got you close to your 18,000 square feet, but you're still looking at for the senior center portion was only 11,300 square feet. The other 7,000 was based on the Head Start portion. So I think we're really comparable for where we're at and what was proposed at that point.
And forgive me if I'm wrong, but the bond language had a dollar amount, not a square footage. So we're meeting a dollar amount.
Yes.
We have a budget. We're going to build as big as we can build under the budget.
With the budget that we have.
That's right.
Unless there's any private owners that want to step forward.
The what now?
Unless there's any private owners that want to step forward.
That's right, absolutely. Yes.
Sir, any additional questions or comments?
I have.
So I'm not sure who to ask this question to, but was the Children's Advocacy Center being part of this considered when this was brought up as a bond issue? And if not, I just want to know how that evolved to become part of this? Do you have any, I don't know who, who may be able to...
I was not here during the bond.
I know, that's, that's why I wasn't sure who to ask it to.
Question, but if you could, I'm not, if you could repeat the question.
Was it always our intention to have the Child Advocacy Center be a piece of this, is what I was, and if not, how?
I couldn't probably...
Yeah, I don't, that's maybe I...
As a board member of the Advocacy Center, that's something that we've discussed as a board, as a need to outreach more in the western side of the county.
Right.
And so when this, when this project passed on the bond, I brought up to the board that maybe we could do that a way to use them as a way to do some counseling services, not any investigation or criminal work, anything like that, but just for counsel.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because I've been asked by a number of residents as to how that got attached. However, I'm not saying it's a good or bad thing. It's just what's the story, what happened, and, you know, as long as...
They have a need to reach people out here and just provide that avenue for community outreach. Thanks for the elucidation.
I think there's even a bigger answer. There were lots of other, we had discussions with other organizations. And Head Start was one of them, but what we've done is worked with the school district to take the older kids, as you know. So that space that Mr. Cummins was talking about would already been reduced. And then the only thing left for the Head Start program are the infants and toddlers, and the school district can't take those, so they're still looking for a place. And two years ago, we had discussions with Webco, and they were supposed to come to the table with money. And that's where that square footage was coming from, and they weren't able to do that, so that fell out.
This is all, I just want, this is all in the transparency. I want everybody to know why, how this is morphed into what it is right now. So I think it's better to let everybody know this is what happened than to just have people guessing why. So I appreciate all your answers.
Anything else, Council?
I'm just really excited to be having this conversation.
I am too. Thank you, Mr. Cummins. Thank you. You've done great work. Thank the committee as well for us. We'll move on to item number 18. Discuss and consider JCO Task Order 007 with J Engineering for professional engineering services to design an eight-inch waterline to replace an existing four-inch waterline on West Drive from Sunny Drive to Cali Street in the amount of $98,500. Authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents and provide an effective date. Mr. Womack?
Bear with me while I get this back to the other slide, but this task order with J Engineering, number seven, provides professional services for design, bidding, and construction phase as well for approximately 1,100 linear feet of eight-inch waterline to replace a air-prone four-inch waterline. We're constantly fixing this waterline. It's between Sunny Drive and Cali Street. It's on the back of Magnolia, the Magnolia subdivision and behind the post office. But you can see here on the map where the waterline is. There's Sunny Drive. Here's the Magnolia subdivision. Cali Street is right here. The post office is right over here somewhere. But it's from Sunny to Cali on West on the east side of West Drive. But this does not include construction phase, or construction, that will design it and then come back again to council for approval to proceed with the construction once it's advertised, designed, advertised, ready for award with your approval. But be happy to answer any questions you may have on this. It's for $98,500, but staff requests authorization for the city manager to execute this task order. JCO, number seven, with J Engineering, to execute any and all other necessary documents.
Council?
Mr. Womack, I have a question. I know we just redid the resurfacing not too long ago on West. Does that waterline happen to go right in the middle of the street?
It stops, I believe, just south of Cali. It's very close, but it doesn't go... It was the low part of West that was failing. This is the, the waterline is failing on the high parts.
So we're not tearing up the street, we just...
I think we'll tear up some asphalt there at Sheila, but we'll try to avoid anything we can. We do try to coordinate it, but sometimes can't help it.
Council?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Stevenson with the second. Is there further discussion? Anything, Mr. Robinsons? You good? Okay. Okay, all in favor? Motion does carry. Thank you, Mr. Womack. Move to item number 19. Discuss and consider award of construction contract to Paton Construction LLC for Brushy Street Streetscape Improvements Project in the amount of $1,891,345.14 and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Always amazes me when we get a bid that has a 14-cent number with it, but I'll take it.
Mayor and Council, you have in front of you a spreadsheet with items 19, 20, and 21 are all GO bond-funded, so we're showing you the total there because some are over, Wayne will explain it, and some are under. But overall, on all three projects, we're well under budget.
Mr. Watts?
All right. Well, on March 22nd, we received five bids for the Brushy Street Streetscape project. The low bidder was Paton Construction with a bid of $1,891,345.14. You may remember that we bid this project back in October of last year, and Patton was the low bidder at that time. They bid, their low bid was $2,66,301.25. And we appreciate that you took staff recommendation or rejected bids. We rebid the project. We saved $175,000 in that process. Staff recommends award of the construction contract Brushy Street Streetscape Improvements Project to Paton Construction LLC in the amount of $1,891,345.14. And I'll be happy to discuss the budget numbers. We might want to go through all three of these, but that's up to you guys if you want to discuss that right now.
Mr. Watts, did the scope change in that reduced bid amount by the same bidder?
No, ma'am. It did not change. We had five bidders instead of two. We also had a competing bid with the Metro Drive project, as we had Brushy Street as an alternate bid in the Metro Drive project. We had nine bidders on that project. They all bid the project. Patton's still lower than all of the additive alternates for the Metro Drive project.
So we're a little tricky because we're only talking about this item, but I think because we're, this is a GO bond, we can touch on all of them. So essentially what we have, Mr. Watts, I understand that this one's going to be almost double what the budget was, but the next two or three come in considerably under, which put us on the total GO bond still way under budget.
Yes, sir. The three projects combined, Brushy Street Streetscape, Metro Drive Extension, and the hybrid pedestrian beacon from El Mathis, if you sum all those up, we are $483,510.54 below the budget.
Change orders. They'll be coming.
And I'd like to point out that for those who are looking at the agenda, especially at home, the agenda item number 19 at the bottom, the amount requested is actually going to be 1.17072 million. So it's a little bit more than what was on, what was actually on the agenda down at the bottom. Okay, it says fiscal impact at the bottom. It said amount requested at the bottom. It looks like it's really going to be the post-award, award of balance that's on here. Because I was a little bit confused by this and had asked on agenda item 19, way at the bottom.
Right. Well, what happened here is there is an omission of one in front of the 891.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what's happening here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's a typo that got missed until late in the day.
Okay, so, all right.
We're on item 18 right now. I entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd, with a second by Councilmember Navarrete. Is there further discussion? Yep. Oh, 19, I'm sorry. I apologize. 19, yep, correct. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Thank you. Item number 20. Discuss and consider award of construction contract to Chasco Constructors for the Metro Drive Extension Project in the amount of $3,733,442.57 and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Mr. Watts?
Well, Mayor, you pretty well summarized it right there with the...
Metro Drive.
Yes, sir. We received nine bids for this project also on March 22nd. As a matter of fact, we received, we opened those, received and opened the bids for Brushy Street and for Metro Drive at the same time, so in order to keep things fair for all of the contractors.
Great. Council?
I just, I was just reminded, what, do we have, these are for construction?
Yes, sir.
So do we have a construction date, finished, completion for Brushy Street?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go back because I forgot to ask. I have it here.
You want San Gabriel? I mean Metro. It should be January, January of 19.
For Brushy?
No, sir.
No, I want to do Brushy Street. I forgot to ask.
Okay, November 18.
Okay. And then Metro Drive is January 18?
19.
January 18, I'm sorry.
Council?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made by Pro Tim Siler for approval, second by, is that Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson, is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Awesome. Item number 21. Discuss and consider award of construction contract to G Carter Construction Company for Metro Drive Hybrid Beacon Project in the amount of $91,450.75 and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Mr. Watts?
We received and opened bids on March 15th for this project. We had two bid proposals. The low bidder is G Car Construction Company Incorporated. They're an excellent company. They've done a lot of work here in Leander. We also very pleased with the bid price of $91,450.75. Staff recommends award.
Council?
I'll motion to approve. I'll second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd, with a second by Councilmember Stevenson. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Let's get them built, Mr. Watts. Item number 22. Discuss and consider the Second Amendment to Task Order STE2 with Smith Toretta Engineering for professional services for CR 269 and Hero Way 12-inch waterline improvements in an amount of $24,974.05. Authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents and provide an effective date. Mr. Watts?
This is a time and materials contract amendment. It's basically largely providing... This is a time and materials contract amendment. It's basically largely providing construction phase services. There are some extra review services and that are associated with that also, but that's approximately twenty-five percent of that amount. Staff requests authorization. City manager negotiate and execute the Second Amendment to Task Order STE two in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and five cents.
Great. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Pro Tim Siler with a second by Councilmember Stevenson. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider the purchase of a new fire engine type three large brush truck from Sidens Martin Emergency Group and Chastain Ford through buy board cooperative program pricing in the amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand, thirty-five dollars and authorize the city manager to approve a purchase order and execute all the necessary documents. Chief?
Mayor, council, first off, I apologize. It wasn't for fourteen cents at the end. I work with the city engineering department to get better at that. When we moved forward with the resolution in January to, to start the process for Fire Station Five, we identified the fleet that would be needed in that process. We also identified in that notice to proceed that we would be purchasing this fleet. We've been spacing the fleet out based on the time in which it'll be aliveing for that facility. So we'll have the ability to use that. We have purchased, we have started the architectural design on that facility. We have started the purchase of the fire engine. This will be the large brush truck that'll be assigned to that station. This truck is a little larger than our existing brush trucks, but with our terrain in that area with our need to be able to protect the homes that are against the wildland urban interface that come from the Travis County Preserve. We need a little larger truck to support that. So this truck is coming from our same fire manufacturer that does our existing trucks, maintenance that is local, that's able to get repairs done, trucks turned back around to us. And this will be purchased off the buy board if this is where you would like to go. This will be part of the CO sales as we move forward. Any questions?
Yeah. You, you forgot to give us a picture of it like the last time when we were purchasing fire trucks.
I apologize. We'll work on getting your picture up.
I wanted to see this truck.
The last time was a little, this truck is not, I'll, I'll send you a truck on this. The picture, actually it does, it does look kind of neat when you look at it, when you put the Ford six by six chassis together, it does look kind of cool.
Should we table this because of that?
We need to table it. I think we need to table it.
Oh, we're not going to hold it up for that.
Mr. Powers is shaking his head.
Mr. Powers shakes his head a lot with me, sir.
Usually this way.
Great. Counsel?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd with a second by Pro Tim Siler. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-four, discuss and consider resolution authorizing the city, the fire chief to apply for FEMA Homeland Security Safer Grant. Mr. Gardner?
Currently, as we prepare to build Fire Station Five, we have gone through the process and now completing the fleet purchasing for Fire Station Five. The next item we'll need to do is staff that facility. The US Department of Homeland Security through the Assistance Firefighters Grant was funded and released. That grant program allows us the opportunity to apply and request funding for hiring of firefighters. The program changes a little bit every eighteen months. Sometimes we don't know what the notice of payment and the process will be until it comes out. This year I was pretty comfortable with that, where we were going to go, that would be in the seventy-five percent range where it is. We spent some time in DC earlier and had some meetings to allow three hundred forty-five thousand or three hundred forty-five million dollars to be put to this fund that had not been placed there before. So that was a trip that was worth doing and having some conversations while we were there. So the current grant existence program will allow us, if we're successful and you wish for us to move forward, they will pay for the positions and we will be asking for twelve firefighter positions. That, that's what they will fund is the firefighter level positions based on what the entry pay is at the time that the grant is submitted. Year one, they will pay seventy-five percent of that value. Year two, they will pay seventy-five percent of that value. And traditionally they dropped it at that point, but now there's a year three in which they will pay thirty-five percent of that value. Basically what that is allowing us to do is over that three-year period, the federal government will pay one point four million dollars and we would be paying somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to balance all of those costs.
And we've used these kind of programs, I know, a number of times.
Yes, sir. We have been successful looking, I looked at that today back over my time here since I took over as chief here. We accepted somewhere in the neighborhood of about five point two million dollars worth of federal grand dollars. And over half of that has been spent initiating staffing.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion made for approval by Pro Tim Siler, second by Councilmember Navarrete. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Go fly. Let us know how it turns out, obviously. We'll move to item number twenty-five, receive update on the geo bonds. Are you doing that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, okay. So, you know, this is from the two thousand sixteen bond election and our first, um, we had planned from the start to have three separate bond issues. There's no way we could afford to issue the seventy-two million all at once, much less get all that work done at one time. So the first bond issue was at the end of two thousand and sixteen. And we're about to have three check marks up there, the Crystal Falls, median landscaping. You've seen the work going on there and it should be complete by the end of April. Um, the Bloodsow Park Synthetic Turf Fields are finished and it's a very busy place right now. The Mason Creek Trail should be finished by the end of summer. And then we step into Lakewood Community Park and the issue, um, we had issued money for the design that is sixty percent complete. We will start work on the grant funded portion of that park later this year. We've got to be finished by the end of the year. And then in the two thousand and eighteen sale that should happen at the end of this year, we'll have money for construction and should start construction of Lakewood Park in two thousand and nineteen. Veterans Park, we, it's been three phases. Phase one and two are complete. And fun, and the design is complete for the entire project and there will be funding in the fall two thousand and eighteen bond issue for the final phase. The Senior Center we heard about tonight, the design has just started. The funding for the design was in two thousand and sixteen. And then funding for construction will be in the fall two thousand and eighteen bond sale. Brushy Creek Trail, it's from the Cap Metro Parking Lot to one eighty-three. That's about eighty percent complete. Most of that has been done by developers in the area. And so there's one small piece left that probably won't be completed until the two thousand and twenty bond sale or perhaps if a developer finishes that for us in the interim. Uh, the Rec Center in the two thousand eight, uh, excuse me, the two thousand and eighteen sale will have money for design and we expect to award a design contract in two thousand and nineteen and then funding for construction in the two thousand and twenty sale. San Gabriel Park Trail, we, once again, designed in two thousand and eighteen, awarded that design in two thousand and nineteen with construction funding in two thousand and twenty. And that would be the same for San Gabriel Park. We just remember San Gabriel River Park is, is a huge park and we did, we did not have funding in this bond sale to develop the entire park. Um, then we move over to transportation and a lot of activity on tonight's agenda. Metro Drive, you just awarded the construction contract and we expect it to be completed by January of nineteen. Brushy Street, you just awarded that contract as well and we expect that to be completed by November of eighteen. And then San Gabriel Parkway, County Road two seventy to Ronald Reagan, this is a little bit different project. It's going to be built in three sections and the center section will be going first because the developer of Palmara Ridge and Palmara Bluff will be constructing a majority of the, the middle. And then will the east and west end, um, will be completed at a later date. The middle design is complete, the middle one-third of that project. The east and west ends are about sixty percent complete and construction funding will be in the, the fall two thousand and eighteen bond sale. Right away, it's a, the design is ninety percent complete. We should probably within ninety days be in a position to start acquiring, acquiring right of way and the construction funding will be in the fall two thousand and eighteen sale. East Street design is about seventy-five percent complete and the construction dollars will be in the two thousand and eighteen bond sale. And then the intersection of South and West Streets, the design funding will be in the two thousand and eighteen sale with the construction funding in the two thousand and twenty sale. And that covers the projects. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Um, I, I just want to make a suggestion that, um, I think monthly is probably too much because of the scope of the project, but maybe we look, have these brought back quarterly? Maybe the, we're kind of, I guess we're at the beginning of a new quarter, so at the beginning of the next quarter would probably be a good time. Unless there's a significant change, obviously, but in most cases when we look at, council, anybody else have a suggestion on that or is that adequate? I mean, I don't think we need to look at them monthly. They're not going to change monthly.
Quarterly is great.
Yeah, I think so too. We really appreciate that update, Mr. Cagle.
I have a question, Mr. Cagle.
You bet.
Sure. Like the Recreation Center, I mean, as far as the land goes, would that be a part of that discussion when that comes up or? Um, that, that will be coming to council. We have, uh, several things going on right now. We've had, we've done an RFQ for operations and we'll be bringing that to the council. And then, um, the discussions now are starting again with ACC for that site. So, um, when we have an operator secured, then it'll be easier to finalize those negotiations, but that'll all be coming back to the council.
Okay. Counsel, anything else?
I, I. The only, my only comment to this, and I, I think there are some people, people on council may already know this, but I'm, I'm pretty, I'm not very happy to see that the Metro Drive won't be finished in eighteen. That's, and I, I know there are extenuating circumstances, but my hope was that it would be open when, before ACC did. And it looks like now it'll be four months after. But other than that, I, I really don't, um, I think we're on, on track for most of the other ones, but that one for me was a, is a little bit of a disappointment. And, um, I just want to make sure that, do these all conform with our, our transportation plan? We're all good with everything on how everything, everything's set up with the, I, I guess something about the, the road cross sections and things like that? We have any issues?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure because I think we recently changed something.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else, counsel? All right. We'll move to item number twenty-six, Councilmember Closing Statements. Mr. Navarrete?
I have her. I am very excited about the updates on the geo bonds. It's always, you know, it takes, it's a process, so it kind of takes a while to start seeing those come to light. So exciting news tonight. Um, that's really all I have. Y'all stay safe. Have a good night.
Okay. I'm going to make up for all those times I never said anything tonight. I know. First off, I want to thank Marshall because I know he took the lead on the paper recycling in there. He got it and, and, and I'm grateful for that. He got all the information together and brought it, made sure it was brought forward. And it's something that we did need to look at. I want to mention something about the, the victim advocates, the, the women who are up here who help out in the police when there's victims of crimes. You know, I, I talk to them and what they do is, is really tough because they're helping people through some of the lowest points of their life and, and the most scared point of their life. And I'm not sure I could do that as they do. And there's not enough of them. They need some more help and some more volunteers and they are volunteering at this. They're not necessarily professionals, but they're, they're there to help the victims through a really tough time. And I'm hoping that, that maybe they can get some more volunteers who want to help others in our community. And, and they should be commended for what they do. And the last item is, um, I have this T-shirt here. It doesn't have Wiley on it, but it was the only T-shirt that was at the Wiley Middle School Fun Fest recently. And I was invited to it last year and I went and I'm not sure if you remember, um, it was a Nicole Smith and Anna Nicole Smith, actually. That was her name. And, um, I got this at the, at the event and I love her and I want to give her a shout out because what she wants to do is she wants to build some, some real community. And she's been inviting us to the, the middle school fun festival so that, that we can go there and, and be a part of, um, not just making and directing, uh, staff here and, and, and doing the city council stuff, but that we can be a part of the school communities too. And I encourage anybody and, and hopefully in the future, we'll get invited to more stuff. I, I love being around the kids and they were out there having a blast and, and seeing every, all the things that they were doing. And it, it helps them out too, to see that we also care about them. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we get invited to more of these and, and I'm looking forward to Wiley's next year. And thank you, Anna.
Great. Shepherd?
Um, I'm excited about all of our bond projects and the progress they're making, especially the Senior Center. One of my favorite. Um, but in the interest of not keeping this longer, that's all I have.
Mr. Hiddle?
Uh, when I see all the cool things on the Senior Center list, I'm thinking next Thursday, on Thursdays, if I don't have anything to do next fall, I know where I'm going to be, so.
Well, you're old enough to use it, so. I am too, but that's the only reason I can get away with saying that, so. Pro Tim?
Um, this morning, the Arts Commission had the opportunity to go to Rouse High School to judge a art sculpture contest. That will be part of the city's, um, Earth Day contests. We'll announce those winners at the next council meeting. They also went to, um, two other schools and I, I wasn't able to attend. But it was really cool just to see, um, what the students did and how they interacted and it was cool.
Great. Mr. Robinsons?
I don't have anything.
Super. I'm going to give just a, a quick shout out to Mr. New back there in the back. So when Mike first came on, Mike's kind of quiet. He's our PIO officer, which is not quite the trend I expected for a PIO officer. Usually they're the guys that are louder than me, but, uh, you see him in the background a lot and you don't see him out in front and he never gets recognized or, but he's doing a, a fantastic job. And if you go on our website, Facebook, all that stuff is being driven by him, the photography, the, um, keeping everybody up on what's going on. And we, we appreciate you. We've been watching you close and we're going to, we're going to go ahead and keep you. Just wanted to let you know that. And, uh, we never had a doubt, but we're, we're glad you're here as we are from all staff. And then I want to, uh, I think counsel got the email, but I did have a meeting this week with the mayors of Maynard, Jonestown Point Venture, uh, Sanlianna and Lago Vista, which are Cap Metro members. And, uh, this group appoints a Capitol Metro representative. And we re-appointed Mayor Jonesy from Maynard as our Capitol Metro rep to continue serving us. She is available if we need any updates or anything like that. That position was formerly held by Councilmember Sebold in the past. It is required that it's an elected official that has to hold that and a member of the joint city, one of the joint cities. But we had a great meeting with them. Um, several of them had not been into the new building since we've been here and they were pretty impressed and, um, because the, what it cost us to do, that two million dollars that we did, that's bigger than a lot of these cities budgets for the year, so it was kind of cool for them to, to look at it. So, uh, with that, there are three left and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So be it.
We are adjourned eight forty-nine.